This meeting is being recorded.
Okay. I'll call the meeting to order. This is the federal planning commission regular meeting for Monday, March 25th, 2024. It's now 7:00 PM. And Hannah, would you take the roll?
Yes. Commissioners present and establishing a quorum. Commissioners Blair, Bull, Dawkins, Lockhart, Low, and Petrino.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Nugent was excused. For the order.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes to move item 5.3, the community development monthly report, down to 7.1.
Thanks, Melanie. Do I have a second?
Oh, sir.
Randy? Okay, Bob? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Looking on, item number three is kind of set aside for public comments. This is a time for people to speak to the planning commission in person on issues related to the city of Monroe, except those issues subject to the public hearing. When invited to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and association with the city or area residents. The timer then be started. Each speaker is only three minutes. Davis?
Hello, everyone. This is Davis, manager of real estate, formerly at Monroe, now at Woodville. Just greetings. We'll be going ahead to the hearing when everyone has a statement.
Thank you. So, to clarify, your place of business moved to Woodville, but you're still working in Monroe?
Yes.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you.
Good.
Okay, commissioners, any suggested edits for the minutes from our prior meeting?
I'm moved that we approved the minutes from February 26th, 2024.
Thank you. Second?
One second.
Thanks, Randy. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Got a review of pretty full document on new things to discuss new business. Item 5.1, draft Monroe 2044, draft thousand chapter case will be presented.
Yes, thank you. So as we are continuing this journey of preparing a complete conference of plan, we are bringing each chapter to you. Some are more complete than others. This is, I would say, more similar to chapters one and two where we're starting to put the foundation together, but you will notice in the document itself, there are lots of holding places. Several of them include the new requirements for our low-income and diversity analysis on our population. And Anita will kind of touch on middle housing later in the agenda, but that type of information is not yet baked into this draft. And so I just really wanted to walk you through the documents. In your agenda bill, I did also provide all of the Growth Management Act requirements, some of the items from the Puget Sound Regional Council, how this ties into Imagine Monroe. So we're, again, building on all of these requirements that we need to comply with. And then another item that is not in here yet is working on the displacement. So we need to protect housing, which I know is kind of a passion for some of us on the commission, which is appreciated. So that will be coming at a later date, and you'll see the placeholders in the documents. So again, the way this chapter is set up, and I don't have a presentation, I'm just literally going to walk you through the document this evening. Just a brief overview of what the chapter is, and then following through on how it relates to other elements. And this one will be really key to tie into both the land use element and transportation element, so that will be built upon. Then it gets into really the demographics of our community, the population, race and ethnicity. I can't even see that word. A lot of these graphics you have already seen when we've gone through some of the affordable housing components, background documents that we brought to you earlier, end of last year, talking about household size. Then we get into, and these are all standard requirements for the element itself. Housing, year of construction, ownership, tenure, housing affordability. Again, this area will have a lot more work. This is one thing that changed with the Growth Management Act. And I'm pretty sure I gave the commission an overview, but at the council last year, a year and a half ago now, there were three different options for the Snohomish County Tomorrow to make a decision on how we were going to comply with some of the new regulations. And that's very specific to, you need to provide X number of housing units by income band, and it was broken out by the average median income. So it was 30% or less, almost 30 to 50. I don't have this memorized, but anyway, that information is not in here yet. And then it will talk about, one piece that's still coming is what kind of housing do you need to provide to accommodate each income group? So reality is, there might be people that can afford apartments, but they might not be able to afford a home or a ownership. And so having this band of options will be coming at a later date. But it's building on what begins on page 15 in your packet, talking about affordable housing. Let's see here. So it's just a lot of graphics. And then the subsidized housing, that you'll see, that whole section is still in development. The piece I'd really like to focus on, oh, I'm sorry, it does include, yeah, I'm putting it ahead of myself, on page 20, starting to develop this table, the comparison of projected housing needs to capacity. This is the bands, the bands that I was discussing that went to city council. And it was, it was the hybrid that the Snohomish County Tomorrow agreed to and which was adopted by the county council in the countywide planning policies. So it shows you how many houses Monroe needs to achieve in each income band. And at a later meeting, I can come back and tell you what that actually means from an income level instead of just the percentages. The piece I'd kind of like you to look at this evening are the goals and policies. Most of these came out of the 2015 plan and are being modified. Actually, the column on the right gives you where this information came from. And then at the end, I would like everyone to, if you haven't read it yet, if you could take a look before April 5th, send edits and comments. We're working on incorporating all of those into the elements that we're getting. So planning commission, the community advisory committee, and then there was a change at council. There was a decision, instead of taking it to the P3, which is planning public works and parks, it is now going to the full council at their study sessions. And so as we're collecting the edits from all of these advisory groups in the council, we will be incorporating them into the next iteration of the document. If they're significant, we will bring back that particular chapter. If they are not huge and, what am I trying to say? Substantive, it will come back primarily as when we start presenting the completed document to you in the summer.
Kate, are you taking questions?
I am.
I see.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a better way of getting comments back to you? Like, how do you prefer so that it's most efficient? I know, like, group projects, we used to use Google Docs, but I'm not sure if a PDF can be in that. How would you like us to give you edits?
You know what? You just brought up a great, because when I send you materials, it's always a PDF. I'm happy to send you a Word document if that's easier to strike through edits. I've been getting, council member Beaumont had taken a PDF, and she's an editor, and so she was going through and just using her shorthand.
Okay.
Yeah. So I will take whatever method works best for you. If it's a PDF, great. The other one was if you wanted to come in and meet with me, I'm happy to do that as well. So super flexible.
Getting so much information from so many people, I just, I feel like I would be overwhelmed with that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, no, 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 no. Because, I mean, the timing of all of it, I had the opportunity to look at each comment and see if they're competing or if they're the same comment. So it's actually not, it's not that hard. So, but speaking to you a Word document, if that works better for you, I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay. I'll think about it. I was just wondering if there was a better way. Okay. Cool. Thanks.
Yeah. No. The only thing is the consultants asked if I could do the consolidation, and I'm happy to do that.
Melanie?
Yeah. Going back to page 16 with the housing cost burden.
Yeah.
And those different numbers are from 2019. And I understand we may not have newer numbers than that. However, one thing to keep in mind as we do this is that we've had an entire pandemic since then. So I would venture to bet that the number of cost burdened households in this community has actually had a significant increase in that time, just because of all the variables and changes in jobs and all that. So I don't know how best to maybe reflect that in this, just so that it's kept in mind. I know that at some point, while the comprehensive plan exists, that new numbers will come in. But if we're looking at like a five-year, at a five-year thing, when, when would we maybe expect new numbers? Will those come in by the end of this year before it's approved?
So these were, actually, Anita, do you recall, is this one of the numbers that Chris Collier was going to update for us? So Anita also was working with AHA, the Affordable Housing, Alliance for Affordable Housing, I forgot my words. So he actually was kind enough to do a review, and I know he had recommended several tables be updated and provided the data source.
Yeah, I don't believe those changes are in this current draft. I just had Chris send me comments last week. So definitely, we do have that in mind, and we did tell the consultants that if they can get current data, we would, we would like that first. And then if we can get that, then our, the program manager for AHA can combine those numbers to give us more recent data.
Okay. Yeah. I'm pretty sure this is one of the ones that he provided. Do you recall? The cost burden numbers?
Possibly. I think he just, yeah. I'll have to double check.
So, I mean, this came from HUD, and it's like the four-year, or the, excuse me, the five-year, so I believe that it's probably been updated.
Yeah, because this is, since this is 2024, that's kind of why I was asking, are we going to maybe have new numbers by year's end for the next five-year stretch that can be inputted? Or if it's being looked at, then, then great. It's just, and if not, if these are going to be the most updated numbers that we have to work with, then just as a collective, I think anybody working on the boards, commissions, and council needs to keep in mind for all the housing elements, that we've had, we've had a pandemic since these numbers. So.
I'm just looking, because you can see, you can follow some of the notes that we had in the sidebar, and I was thinking of the American Community Survey, five-year estimate from 2020 at least would be an updated from this. So I'm 90% sure these numbers will be up.
Carla, did you have a question?
Yeah. I'm just out of curiosity, like, when you say current numbers or updates, like, what timeframe are we talking about? From last year or 2024?
So a primary data source, most of it is the census. But they do the community, American Community Survey, which is updated annually in annual and five-year chunks. And so whatever data source that we're able to use from that, we also have AHA, which is, it comes out of the Snohomish County Housing Authority? Yeah. And so they have some, they have different data sources, very specific to Snohomish County. So it depends on the data source, we're using what's readily available. So hopefully, we'll get things that are at least 2020 or newer.
Right. I know a lot that I was reading, a lot of stuff was by 2020, which I feared it was because of the census.
Yeah.
But if you, if you look at the numbers in the bar charts on the next page, so from 2010 to 2020, our disparity, Monroe, which is Snohomish County, we were 2.3% higher in rents, and now we're 4.8% higher. So to Melody's point, likely more cost burden, or right now. And if it's HUD data, we're at the mercy of when HUD publishes, right? And if you look at median home, median home sales price, median is the number in the middle of the data, right? Exactly all the data. So 2012, you know, our, if I'm reading this right, Monroe prices, home prices were significantly under Snohomish County, and now we're higher. So that means it's more expensive to live in Monroe, even though it's a harder commute than most places than other places in Snohomish County. We used to be less expensive because we had to commute, so, right?
Yeah. For, really, just to that point for, gosh, decades. It was Everett, Monroe, and Marysville were the standouts for having higher numbers of subsidized housing, lower housing prices, but that really changed in 2010 and moving forward. At least for Monroe. Okay. Any more questions before we get into the goals and policies? So again, I just really wanted to walk through these for you. You can see that there are strike through and edits. Again, most of these are from either the current 2015 plan or starting to pull in items that are compliant with changes to the Growth Management Act or Puget Sound Regional Council. Again, those really deal with, et cetera, dwelling units, having higher density in residential areas, and dealing with displacement and income levels. So would you let me read through them? Do you want to read through them independently? Just trying to get a sense of, are we on the right track?
I was, I like them. I was impressed with what is the draft so far. And like, how much of this do you think, like, how many more goals and items and stuff are we looking at? Because I mean, on the chapter two, whatever that we looked at, and it's like pages and pages, so this is housing, it's probably going to be pretty extensive. This is just like the very tip of the iceberg, and we're looking at like sixty more pages of these, or what, what do you think?
I don't think it's, so the parks chapter, chapter seven, had a huge list. Yeah, because that, that was meeting requirements for the PROS plan, which follows the state recreation, whatever entity that requires that to get funding. I would suspect this is going to grow as well, really to address displacement. We haven't gotten into that. The providing housing for all economic levels, getting into the middle housing that Anita will discuss later this evening. So I would expect this to grow. How much, I'm not sure, but this is the beginning. And again, it's just as a reminder, we're really trying to work with all of the boards, the commission, and the council early in this process to make sure that we're going in the right direction, and there's not huge gaps or things that you're like, whoa, I didn't expect to see that in the document.
One more question. So this is set up a little different than the chapter seven, where it was like the goal and action item right underneath it? Is that coming?
This will change.
This one will change?
Yeah, this will change. I have been asking, so that was one of the questions the consultant team has posed to us, how do you want the formatting? And so we're still having those conversations. My suspicion is it will be more similar to chapter seven, where it lays out the goal, the policies, and the actions. At this point, it was really just trying to start the conversation, are we going in the right direction?
Bob? Yeah, that was my question. This, this is like, it baselines everything. This is where we're at. This is, you know, here's the data, and it's very readable. I mean, for a planning document, which generally, planning documents aren't something you go read, you know, for recreational purposes, but this is actually pretty readable for what it is. And it's, the level of detail is, I think, perfect for what this document is at this point. Like you say, we're going to be adding, going into the implementation plan of this, not just the data, not just setting out where we're at today. So I assume maybe we're going to, this is going to get more meatier in the future, but I'd like to maintain the readability of it for all those people that come here to read this kind of stuff.
Thanks, Bob. And Kate, is there, because we looked at this in 2015, so, you know, not a lot of it happened. Is there any, like, timeline of when we would like to see these things implemented? Or, you know, the progression of how we would like them to be implemented to advance our plan?
Yeah. So it was Commissioner Blair who asked, or was it, was it Lockhart? Okay. Who asked the question last meeting or two meetings ago, and I apologize, I was going to get you the citation. One of the more recent amendments to the Growth Management Act is you have, if there's a lot more accountability, you actually now have to track how you are accommodating your goals, how are you achieving them? Because if you're not, you need to start making changes. So that is one piece that I still need to bring back to you. I cannot, and I honestly cannot remember the first reporting, reporting period. I feel like it's five years out. So making a note to myself. So yes, there is a lot more accountability now.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make a note, and you'll probably have to remind me again as we get through this process, but yeah, I just want to make sure that we're getting this somewhere. Bob?
But that was another question. In my prior planning experience, the state of California didn't ask for accountability, so all they wanted you to do was find a section in your zoning map where you could zone this thing theoretically, like the emergency shelters and things of that nature. And they never came back and said, well, how are you doing on that plan? I think it was just like a, a dream plan.
I would say there's still some similarities to that in Washington State, that even with the 2022, is it 22? The most recent amendment, the wording changed, so it's not as theoretical. But if nothing else, we're, we're being held accountable now. So if we're, we have to document.
So it has to be a little more realistic than just, there's a plot of land out there that we can use for this, but there was really no plan to do it.
Yeah. And to some extent, that's still the Growth Management Act.
Yes.
They're moving a little bit more to accountability, but that being said, they also, the state has given jurisdictions more tools. For example, we can now charge, I can't remember, it's a percentage of tax to start raising money for emergency shelters. That didn't exact, that didn't exist five years ago.
No, it didn't.
So the state is, is not only making these additional requirements, but they're finally starting to help us figure out ways to actually implement and fund. A lot of the very low-income housing, we are still going to have to work on relationships with Housing HO or the Housing Authority. Another big item that has been, well, we haven't talked about it yet in Monroe, but like for Sound Transit, they're, they actually have written into their charters now, when they are ready to dispose of land, they have to look at organizations that will provide affordable housing. So that's, things are changing in Washington State.
As we, as we fill out our housing and work on that, are we going to involve those groups in our planning process?
And we, we do have some outreach. Well, we've got a direct connection with Chris Collier at AHA, who also works for the Housing Authority. I think that the document needs to be a little bit more firm, and we'll send it to them for review. Kelsey, do you have any more questions? Okay. So if you can look through it, if you want the Word document, let me know, and I will have Hannah send it out to everybody if it's easier to do strike through. The edits that I've been getting so far are fine writing on the document. Whatever, I take it.
Thanks, Kate.
Presentation? Yeah.
Ready for 5.2? Okay. 5.2, Monroe 2044, transportation plan, multimodal level of service standards. Kate is going to present this as well.
Yeah. Okay. So this presentation was given to the city council a couple meetings ago. They, they really have the oversight on making the decisions, but I thought the presentation was a really great introduction, because this will be incorporated into the transportation, either the transportation element or a summary included in the transportation chapter. And so what I'm talking about this evening is multimodal level of service standards. So historically, when talking about transportation, all of the focus was on seeing vehicles, passenger vehicles, freight vehicles. And so the state, gosh, it's probably been over a decade, was encouraging jurisdictions to start looking at more than just cars, start looking at your pedestrian infrastructure, how you tie into transit, really look at all the different ways that people travel within and between communities. And so this is also one of the more recent amendments to the Growth Management Act. It is now a requirement that the city do multimodal transportation planning. So next slide. Thank you. And so some of the first, the first bullets I presented last year, a year and a half ago, I'm starting to lose track of time, just the introduction to the transportation element, that last one, section B, is that now the multimodal. And again, they flipped on how we make the priorities for transportation. So it used to be cars, everything about cars, and then at the bottom, it used to be pedestrians. So now we're most concerned about pedestrians, bicycling, transit, and then the automobile is at the very end of what we're looking at accommodating. And it's not just the road. It's now what's in the total right-of-way, which is from into property line, sidewalk, wide shoulder, travel lanes, could be a shared path like we have in front of the fairgrounds now. We're looking at everything. And so, and so some of the things that we are looking at are, so you have to kind of take a step back and not just look at the roads now, but where are we missing sidewalks? Do we have bike paths? Do we have on-road bike lanes? And so part of the work that the transportation consultant, Transpo, is doing is putting together all of these inventories, so we know what we're beginning with. And so to figure out where we're starting, you need to know that before you start figuring out what your deficiencies are or where you have gaps in your system. Next slide. Level of service standard. So this is really talking about how much delay is there? And again, this is really originally focused on vehicles. So free flow, no traffic, that's a level service A. B, you've got some, some delay, but generally, it's still free flow. It doesn't get down to traffic that makes you crazy, like you experienced over the weekend, is level F. That is stop and go. It takes two hours to your trip, this should have gone much quicker. That's level F. And so just to give you an overview today, I think it's the next slide. Our level of standard, service standards for the city were adopted in 2015, and I actually don't think they've changed much since the first plan in 1994. And some caveats I want to point out. So the state makes the determination on what the level of service is for the state route. So that's US 2, 522, and SR 203. The remainder of the road network is determined by the city of Monroe. And right now, our minor arterials, which include West Main Street, Chain Lake Road, Rylands Boulevard, those are all at a level of service D. And so you can have a little bit of congestion, we're okay with that. For the collectors, like Kelsey Street, 179, the level of service, and then, sorry, your collectors and your local, the level of service is C. So really, there's not a lot of traffic. You've got not a lot of delay. So really, there's not a lot of traffic, you've got not a lot of delay. And that includes all of the local neighborhoods. But again, we're only looking really at automobiles. Next slide. Yes. So on that, so since those other roads are not our local roads, and those are the ones that are usually the worst, Highway 2, for example, we're not going to be able to address any of that. I would say no. And so I was going through, just in prepping for tonight's meeting, we do have some interlocal agreements with the state. And I'll just kind of read it to you, I was trying to figure this out in my head on how this works, but we do have an agreement with the state. And so I'm just going to read this to all of you. An interlocal agreement between the city and Washington State Department of Transportation establishes the following level of service standards for intersections located along US 2, SR 203, and SR 522. Where the level of service prior to development is D or better, attempts to maintain a level D will be undertaken. Where the level of service prior to development is E, the state will request that the level of service E be maintained after development. So that could require some kind of an improvement to ensure that it doesn't go worse. It doesn't get worse, sorry, grammar. And then finally it says, where a level of service prior to development, to development is F, the state will require mitigation measures so that the project in place, the established, excuse me, the estimated delay or signalization intersections, or the reverse capacity for non-signalized intersections, or the volume to capacity ratio for segments be no worse than the pre-development. So in all of those, they're saying it can't get worse, but they're not making it get better either. And I honestly have not been involved as much with transportation planning to find out if there's an opportunity to negotiate. Because it really comes down to the state, we don't maintain them, the state maintains those roads as well.
I agree, but I would like to see us talk about, because even though they're not, they're not ours to maintain, they are ours to be impacted by and affect everyone, so they're also ours to have influence on. And we need to have a stronger voice on talking about what effects that this has had. And not only just our own local development has been impacting Highway 2, but the development in our sister communities like Sault Ste. Goldfarne and up the valley. So I think we need to take a different stance than we've taken forever, which is like, that's DOT and not us, because it severely impacts the daily life of residents here, and we should be standing up for that.
Melanie?
To kind of respond to that, I do know the city has lobbyists that go and work with our state legislatures, correct?
That is correct.
And then also, in terms of like, how, how do they decide, like whether it's D versus E, like how long, because if you drive, like if you drive 522 between 4:00 and 6:00 PM into Monroe, or the other direction between, you know, 8:00 and 9:30 AM, then, then I mean, you're, we're looking at the EF range, but the rest of the day, it's not necessarily as bad. So obviously, I know that there's been work done from the city's perspective, and it's a constant conversation. And I know that technically funding has been earmarked at the state level to make those improvements, but it's in like a 10-year plan, and we're in, we're marked for like year six, so it could get pushed out again if, you know, if they decide to do it that way, or it could get moved up, which would be, you know, to our benefit as a city. But what, I guess the question, the big question is, how do they make the determination of what level it is? And then also, is the city looking at increasing the amount of lobbying that's being done? I know we all start faced with the challenge of just the representatives that represent Monroe, we're all in Eastern Washington, and I know they've done some work and they've had those conversations, but they're still in Eastern Washington. So they may be more impacted by 2 than 522, but in terms of people who are going in and out of Monroe, they might say that 522 is worse than 2 even. So it just kind of depends on who you talk to. Sorry, that was a lot of questions.
Yeah, no, no, no. Conversation at the same time. I cannot answer those, but I can start researching and getting responses for you.
Bob?
My understanding is it generally measures peak hour.
Yes.
Peak hour flow. And I'm curious, the state says that it's currently at an F level, and if it gets any worse, they'll do something about it?
No, it doesn't say they'll do something.
How does it get worse than that? Is there a G? I haven't ever seen a G.
Yeah, no, F is, F is failing.
Yeah, and also the, we don't have any level of service standards for pedestrian bikes or transit.
Which is why we're talking about this tonight.
Who's going to get this?
What do you mean?
Who's going to do the traffic studies to figure out where our current?
We are, so I just wanted to, you're ahead of me in expectations.
Who's funding it? Never mind.
We have to find the funding for our own community. But talking about the state routes, I am more than happy to start doing the research on that for you. Okay, next slide. Any questions before we move on?
If we can go back, so I just wanted the planning commissioners to understand our limitations. We are, our east-west, you know, roadways are very limited. We have 154th and Main that we can control. Some of the state route, traffic is not development, it's tourism. So we need a traffic study to tell us how many of those folks are not residents of surrounding areas plus are passing the interstate. And we have no control over Highway 2 because they're coming from east of the mountains or the mountains, right? Or average on the way through, wherever. So that, we didn't need a traffic study to tell us how many of those folks are transiting.
Well, my point to that is that it doesn't matter really where they're coming from or where they're going, it impacts, and that it's not our road, it impacts everyone that lives here, because it's, and so I think we need to take a new stance, which is be more vocal to the DOT and saying that they need to do something about it, or they need to help give us money to do something about it.
When you look at the map, that's what the bypass is for.
That's, so, yes.
I just want to make my point, so again, my point is that I don't like that old way of thinking where we just keep saying it's hands off and we can't do anything, and we're just waiting for the, you know, finish 522 bypass. So there are actual little things that could be done all over Highway 2 that we, the city of Monroe, could be advocating for our residents for, to the Department of Transportation.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yes. Okay. Moving on. So what is a level of service standard multimodal? It is starting to bring in not only the vehicle movement, but let's start building upon the pedestrian and bike network. So again, the first step is figuring out the inventory, what do we have to work with? The next stage after that is what's missing. If you have exceeded the level of service for the vehicle traffic, all right, the next step is development or whoever's causing this additional traffic, if it's within the city, now you have to do ex-lineal feet of bike path or ex-lineal feet of sidewalk. Most new developments require sidewalk on both sides, so that's kind of a given. So then you're looking at, all right, what are the offside? So it'd become, the other piece that the state changed is that we can actually collect impact fees now for multimodal transportation improvements, which is brand new. So when a new development comes in, we have a new potential funding source to complete our network. And so that's really what this is getting at. One thing that the city is also moving, we have a combination of intersection and corridor-based analysis right now for level of service. We will go, we will be moving to 100% corridor, so it's the volume of people, cars moving through a corridor. So in the next couple of slides are a couple of examples. All right, so this is 154th, which is currently, the level of service is C. And most of the day, you will see that there's capacity. Now that might, you might be going through that corridor at school, school gets out, and there's going to be a pinch point, but the majority of the day, you still have a lot of capacity. So in this situation, you probably would not see a lot of additional requirements. Now, if that were closer to C, then you would say, all right, there might not be vehicle capacity, but now you would build upon your bicycle network. And so that's really what we're starting to look at, and the analysis is continuing.
The speeds on that, where is that data from? Because I was at a P3 committee meeting where they were talking about the speeds that they had gotten the consultant company, and most every road that was a 25 mile an hour was a lot higher than 25, and this is indicating that people are basically going the speed limit.
Yeah, so it's the same consultant firm that is working on the safety projects. My understanding is they have been coordinating with Transpo. So this is your full day, it's not looking at those highs and lows like the safety project. But it's, they are doing the mega data, which is basically your cell phones, people are taking that information, that's how we're getting it. It's not having the little bumps that you go over in the roads anymore. There's mega data, right? That's what it's called. So it's buying what's available for you having a cell phone in your car.
So to clarify, the safety piece is going to be separate?
That is a completely Monroe project, yes. And if you would like, I can pull the presentations and just put it in a future packet for information.
That would be great.
This is, that project is at the council, it's completely separate.
Living in the Praylins and going to and from Praylins Elementary every day, and the fact that in the past two weeks, I've seen multiple cars, the fastest one going probably close to 80 miles an hour down 154th. And then there was, I know a child that was like clipped a couple days ago or evented last week, and the car just drove off. So like, in terms of like the safety piece, and then looking at our level of service and having to look at pedestrians and bikes too, that's why I'm wondering how much will we, how much will overlap with the safety piece in this piece?
Yeah, that safety, that safety is a very specific project, looking at ways of slowing traffic down. And I know Randy was at that, one of the meetings, it was something insane, like, was it like 20 miles over in some sections on a regular basis?
Yeah.
And letting you know it's a problem.
It was like 60% of all cars are going over.
154th, 179.
And it was like a 5 to 10 mile an hour. Yeah, we live, we live a block, like a neighborhood block off of 154th, but we hear the cars zooming all the time. So I know that, and I've seen it obviously, like real nice, multiple times, but anyway.
That's why, yeah, the stat doesn't quite seem accurate, but it may be. But, so is there a way to add? I noticed that the whole transportation piece is only talking about the different modes, but I mean, if people aren't safe, then using, you know, enhancing the modes isn't going to do anything. So can we emphasize safety on this portion, or is it not allowed to do that?
Safe and efficient, because all it says on here is that, you know, the efficient multimodal transportation. But if it said safe and efficient, that would give it a whole nother layer of emphasis that would be more important.
Yeah, I'll ask. I mean, both projects are going on concurrently.
Bob?
I'm curious, what is a potential concurrency corridor?
So they're looking at specific, so 154th, 179, Chain Lake Road, it's really hard to see on these maps, I apologize for the size, Chain Lake Road, Woods Creek Road, Turney Place are the initial suggested ones, but at the end of the day, the council is going to make that decision.
So that means that that's a place where we might emphasize more pedestrian and bike?
Yes.
And I'd like the idea of the safety included, because I see people trying to ride their bike on Chain Lake, it could be a problem.
Yeah. Well, and Chain Lake Road, luckily, that multimodal path has been recently completed, so that's, that is a nice alternative for bike and ped.
Melanie?
Also, dude, we have a unique situation, I mean, it's not necessarily super unique, but it is unique, where obviously Main, Main Street is a main corridor for us, that is within the city, but a problem place is a cross between Main Street and 203, essentially, but I mean, it's Lewis, but it's also 203, so it's in the state's hands. So what piece of that is us versus the state? And like, hopefully I'm being clear enough on this, is that at what point do we have to kind of work with the state on that because it involves both roads and potentially, I mean, potentially be limited if we need some kind of like approval or whatever from the state at one intersection? Because that's, that's going to be a problem place, or at least a place where a lot of residents are going to have questions about and concerns about, is an intersection that crosses a purely city zone and then a state one.
Yeah, I'm going to reach out to Scott Peterson, our city engineer, and just ask him some of these questions, because it's really clear that this, or get a copy of the interlocal agreement, because it's really clear that wherever the city's roads intersect with US 2, 203, or 522, there's conversation between the agencies. So I'll see what I can learn and bring it back.
Does the state control the lights, the signals?
On US 2 and 203. Yeah, 203. Okay, and so this is another example, Main Street, we were just talking about, where there is less available capacity. So what this is basically getting at is there's a higher potential to see the pedestrian improvements happen here more quickly than some of the other corridors where we're not seeing it dipping in closer to the level of service that the city had adopted. One thing that came up at the council meeting is a council member had asked, well, why don't we just have everything at A, where there's free flow? The problem with that means the city is going to have to build bigger, and it's a huge cost. So every time you step up A, B, or C, there's a higher cost to maintain that free flow of traffic, so that's really not advised. Where the consultants were saying that for the city of Monroe, the level of service C and D probably are really good for the city, especially based on the data they've been collecting to date, that we're not even close to that the majority of the day. There's opportunity minus the pinch points around to and from work and school getting out. Okay. So this is getting at some of the networks that they're doing the inventory on and trying to complete it. And then the last slide is just talking about the timeline. Kelsey, did you have any questions? Just want to make sure I'm not ignoring you. No, okay. Okay. And so again, this work will be a component of the transportation plan that you will see this summer or into the fall, and it will be summarized with additional goals and policies in the transportation chapter. So I have lots of homework to do. Do you have any other questions?
Thanks Kate. Okay, moving on to 6.1 Home Business Middle Housing Draft Code.
Is it working?
It's, I think, I'm sharing the wrong thing, so let me just double check.
Lance is still there. Well, Anita's pulling that out. Lance, I just wanted to coordinate with you, is there anything else that you wanted to add for the? Is there anything else that you wanted to add for the commissioners regarding the transportation draft? Or the, yeah, the transportation limited level of service standards or the housing chapter?
Uh, no, no, there's not. I think you covered it well. It's, it is a complicated issue and there's a lot of moving parts to it. I think some of the questions from the commissioners kind of bring up some of those interjurisdictional things related to the, the city and the state. So I, I, I know that the public work staff can provide some clarity on that, but I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Good evening, everyone. So I'm here tonight to talk about middle housing, to give you an overview of what we've been doing. And then at the end, we'll take a look at the draft middle housing code. So the agenda for tonight is to give you an introduction and overview of middle housing. I know we have a couple of new planning commissioners. We've talked about middle housing a couple of times. Last September was the first time, just talking about middle housing grant and what that involved. We also had some joint meetings with CHSAB. And we talked about middle housing as in relation to the housing element of the comprehensive plan update. And so some other things we'll go through is our housing action plan, or the HAP, which was adopted in two thousand and twenty-one. We'll look at the previous work that was completed through the middle housing grant, which was completed last year, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll take a look at the draft code. And I know that some of you may not have had a chance to fully look through it. It's not that tent to go line by line, but just to see how it's laid out and to give some general feedback and comments. And then we'll go through the next steps of getting the middle housing code through, through a planning commission, all the other commissions that we have at the city, and then eventually city council. So when we're talking about middle housing, we're talking about buildings that are compatible in scale form in character with single-family houses and contain two or more attached stacked or clustered homes, which include duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, fiveplexes, sixplexes, townhouses, stacked flats, courtyard apartments, and cottage housing. So back in two thousand and twenty, there was this book called Missing Middle Housing. And this graphic is where I got this for you today on this slide. So, so this is exactly why it's called Missing Middle Housing. So we're looking at what, some housing options that will be in between the typical detached single-family homes and the, and the mid-rise apartment buildings. So in that grouping, what I just talked about, we have these small-scale developments that fit nicely into existing neighborhoods. So middle, uh, middle housing is one of the answers to the housing crisis in Washington State, in St. Helmut County, in Monroe, regionally, and statewide. So this is just, just one of the many things that we can do to get some of these developments to strive for attainable housing. And these are just some pictures that, that I got off of Commerce's website, just showing you the different types of middle housing. As you can see, the example, the duplex. I mean, if you look at it, I mean, you could be looking at a single-family home. You know, it's smaller in scale, looks like would fit into a neighborhood in Monroe. But it does, it is two units, so you have, and it's because of that, it's just assumed that it'd be a little more affordable than just a standard detached single-family home. And so there's other types of developments we have here. One of the interesting ones is cottage housing. That's a, that's a concept. We do have a development in town. It's an older development. It's, it's kind of considered cottage housing, but I don't think it was developed that way. But this, there's this opportunity for Monroe to have this type of housing and then the same. So back in two thousand and nineteen, there was a grant from Commerce for cities and other jurisdictions to develop a housing action plan. So that is what the city of Monroe did. So it, and we applied for the grant, received the grant, hired a consultant to help us write the plan, and worked on it throughout COVID. So it was, it was a little difficult to get, a lot of community engagement, a lot of it was virtually, obviously. But I think we came out with a really good plan, a lot of good strategies. And these are the strategies that I have here on the slide. So the first one was zoning regulations. And basically, it was zoning changes to promote flexibility for desirable housing projects. A lot of times developers will come in and say, you know, I can't do this development. Then the numbers don't pencil out, you know? We need, we need some more flexibility. So this is kind of what we're looking at doing. Middle housing, middle income housing at the time we're calling it. So in the, in the plan, there are some middle housing options, just like what we talked about. It also includes accessory dwelling units. The third strategy is expanding the supply of attainable housing for low-wage workers. And that is allowing those workers to be able to live in the city. You know, we have restaurant workers, grocery store workers, retail workers. And a lot of times they're coming out from the city. So it'd be ideal if we could provide some housing for those workers. Another strategy we came up with was minimizing displacement of low-income residents. This is something we'll be working on in the housing department as well. So this is very important that when we do those, those infill developments, that we have some displacement strategies in place. So those current residents can, can maybe stay in one of those units, maybe create affordable housing and maybe like a fourplex or something like that. So we want to make sure that we're aware of that as well. And then another strategy was multi-family development incentives. And we talked about that in the past. That's still on the list to get done. We're putting that in the back burner for now because we want to get this middle housing code through first. But then eventually I will be bringing that back, hopefully, maybe in September, October, to planning commission. And then the last one is master plan communities. And so that is just this great idea to just have different types of housing, all-in-one development, single-family duplexes, maybe small-scale apartment buildings. And then I, one strategy that I forgot to put on here is we, we do have a strategy for housing people with special needs. So it's seniors, people with disabilities and things like that. So I did forget to put that in there, but that is in the HAP. And then you can go on our website if you wanted to look at that a little deeper. So this is where we're stemming from, as we move forward into our middle housing code. So after the HAP, we received another grant from Commerce for middle housing. And so we hired a consultant. And the purpose of the grant was to look at all our single-family zones and to make sure that at least thirty percent of the lots in those areas allowed for middle housing. This was completed in two thousand and twenty-three. And out of that grant, we received a public evaluation report from the consultant in our ratio equity, equity report, and proposed policies to address anti-displacement. We received future land scenarios. And they helped with the middle housing staff report. And then the main deliverable of this grant was the draft ordinance. And that's something we'll talk about in a little bit. So I took these slides out from a presentation that our consultant did. I think it was back in December. I think it was, I think it was a joint meeting, but I know it definitely came to planning commission. So I just pulled out a couple of these slides just so, because they did a lot of the work already on our different zones and what's allowed in the different zones and in the residential area. So the first scenario that the middle housing assessments focused on was analyzing the single-family zones, so, so it's R four and R seven for potential middle housing development. So they looked at ADUs, duplexes, townhomes, triplexes, quadplexes, and cottage clusters. So in that analysis, they looked at all three single-family zones, which is R four, R seven, and R fifteen. And as you can see, in R four currently, so ADUs are allowed throughout all single-family zones. In R four, attached dwelling units are not allowed, but detached and duplexes. Same thing with R seven. ADUs are allowed, detached is not. And then detached and duplexes are permitted use. And then we go to the R fifteen, which allows everything except duplexes. So, and then as you can see, if you're not familiar with our land use designations, R four, the maximum density is four, R seven is seven, and then R fifteen is fifteen, that's per acre. And then they just provide us some other information like lot coverage and maximum building height. This just kind of goes through their methodology of how they came up with this data. So they identified all the parcels in the R seven, R four, R seven, R fifteen zones. They excluded parcels that, that will not have residential developments. And they looked at conditions and assumptions for each housing type, such as ADUs. And then they looked at minimum lot size and housing unit characteristics and then development code. So in the next couple of slides, I'm going to be showing you the maps that they came up with. These are part of the land use scenario. So this is just more of the information they used to come up with the middle housing assessment. Willingness of homeowner to sell or redevelop the property, return on investments, market readiness, and difficulties of consolidating parcels. So this is all the information they plugged into their land use scenario. And these are some more conditions and assumptions, looking at all the different types of middle housing, looking at parking, lot coverage, minimum lot size, unit size, and unit count. And I can also provide you with this PowerPoint presentation if you wanted to take a look at it at some point. I know, I know it's a lot of information. So this is taking a look at the zoning districts in the city. And so as you can see, it's only calling out the residential areas. And so for, for right now, we're looking at allowing middle housing in all of these zoning districts in the housing code. And then some data that came up of this is that only, let's see, there are four thousand eight hundred sixty-eight parcels in four single-family residential totaling fourteen hundred eighty-seven point nine five acres. So this map here takes a look at the existing residential development. And as you can see, a majority of the housing in Monroe is single-family, detached, single-family. And then this map shows the ADUs in the areas where ADUs would be allowed. Or, or I'm sorry, that ADUs could be allowed, considering the lot coverage and setbacks and things like that. These are the areas where you, where you could have a possible ADU. And then this is the areas where you could have duplexes according to kind of those similar variables, zoning, maximum lot coverage, setbacks, maximum height, things like that. And then this is just more information on duplexes. Same thing for triplexes. So as we saw before, not all single fam, or not all residential zoning districts allow triplexes. It was only in that R fifteen zone, so this is where they'll be allowed. So this is a quadplex and fourplex. These are the areas where potential development could occur. So as you can see, you would need a larger lot for that, and then you have to count for off-street parking. And I really liked the work that the consultant did because it, it actually went through and let us know how many parcels could actually be developed for this type of development. And this is another map showing fourplexes or quadplexes. This is cottage cluster, so cottage housing, what we're kind of talking about before, looks like there's one thousand one hundred twenty-six available parcels that could potentially have a cottage cluster. And then this is a map showing townhomes. So the definition for a townhome in Monroe is three or more units, attached units.
So I think a clarification, as you're looking at the map, just because it has that coloring does not necessarily mean you can have that development. It's showing you areas that you could have. If you're looking at the top part, like the very first prime bullet on this one, only twenty-five percent of these potential areas meet the criteria that you could actually have this development. So the, the map, it's not misleading, but it's, it's qualifying that these areas could potential, but the reality is only twenty-five percent of this area is feasible. So there's a very big difference about having the right zoning. You still have to have a lot size, lot coverage.
So why would you use a parcel's authority?
Absolutely. Well, and the other thing that's not really accounted for here is a lot of, especially in the Frylands, the covenants, when they were developed, subdivisions don't allow that type of development. And it's the state right now. It is what it is, whatever your covenant is. Exactly.
Tony. Is there a way for the general public to find out if their lot is like okay for an ADU with all the law on charges and stuff like that? Because there's, there's different new laws with ADUs, right?
So House Bill twelve twenty requires all residential lots in Monroe to, we cannot, we have to allow up to two accessory dwelling units that can be an internal conversion. Like if you have a split level, you could have two, you have primary, and then you have your secondary, and then a detached. The, the law, though, does not require the city to change its bulk standards. So if you have, you're on a small four thousand square foot lot and your house is already two thousand square feet, the probability of you having a detached is probably unlikely because we still in underzone. The maximum lot coverage is other fifty or sixty percent, and that's the area that the water cannot penetrate. But you might be able to convert, if you have a split level, you could get a split level or a second unit out of them. As for mapping where that opportunity is, that's not something that is within the bounds of our current contract with our consultant, but maybe something we could do internally with our GIS department, depending on their availability. And again, that doesn't get to CCNRs. That would require a secondary research project.
How does this relate to areas that have HOAs?
That's what I'm getting at. So if you have a homeowners association and your covenants say you cannot have an accessory dwelling unit, there's nothing the city can do about that. That is part of your developments.
They rule over the city.
They do. Even though, and, and so CCNRs are kind of interesting because in a lot of subdivisions, especially planned unit developments or PRDs, where the developer came in and they got extra number of units because they created a lovely park, those covenances and restrictions, the city does not enforce any of that. We require the development to have that because the property owners are all responsible for maintenance of a park or a sign, or some instances, it's the street trees alike. It could be a whole laundry list of items. The city does not enforce that. So it's literally your homeowners association that would be responsible for enforcing those regulations. One of the changes that happened, I'm getting confused because there's so many that have changed literally in the last three years. The housing, housing has been very a concern for our state legislature. The housing has been very a concern for our state legislature. But new covenances cannot prohibit accessory dwelling units. And I can't remember if that change happened this year or last year.
Is someone also challenging the?
Last you guys.
So last challenge, if the state legislature was hoping that all houses were allowed to have ADUs, I would think somebody's been trying to challenge that HOAs.
I feel like I've heard something, but I honestly haven't been as involved with changes. And honestly, I don't know if they're legal. Would be done legally.
Because I mean, in a town like Monroe, when we see in here what our housing, most of our housing has been built since nineteen eighty. And so it's like twenty-two percent of it is built before nineteen seventy-nine. And, you know, nineteen ninety, it went even higher. So that's when like all of those people would have, homeowners would have restrictions for no ADUs then. And if that's not included on this information, then we're really limited on.
Not all, not all the Freyland's development has an HOA.
No?
Lance, do you, do you recall for the accessory dwelling units in the covenants, was that, was that in the legislature this year on existing covenants? Like, I feel like I have a conversation, but I don't believe that can be legally changed. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, it was, the state of Oregon, in their last legislative round, did, did pass legislation that prohibited HOAs from, from having restrictions on ADUs. And there was a bill proposed in Washington that had similar language, but it never even made it out of committee. But it, but, but that bill also had, had some other things that were related to it as well. So it may come back in a subsequent legislative session.
Yeah, the bigger question was, can you rec- rec- retroactively supersede a covenant that prohibits it, that prohibited it if it was built in the seventies or eighties or nineties? And my understanding is you can't because that's a legal document that was recorded, adopted. And I don't recall any, hearing any, anything in the legislature that has the authority of changing that. Do you recall that one?
I, I, I'm not sure of the legality of that. I know the legislation that I saw, particularly out of Oregon, it didn't retroactively. It was for anything subsequently passed or, or, or recorded, or attempted to be recorded.
Thank you. So we can look into, we can ask that question. I'm almost positive that's been discussed, that if, if an existing covenant restricts it, there is no, there's no way of retroactively prohibiting it?
No, that makes sense. You don't have to look into it. I just, I'm guessing like, like he mentioned that it'll come back around to somebody talking about it in the future.
Yeah. Thank you, Lance.
The legislature does fix, you know, covenants that are discriminatory based on, if you're. So, but this is any in the situation, it's not discrimination in that fashion, true?
Yes.
Middle housing and the ratio, that speaks about population of your city, right?
Right. So we're not required to pass the middle housing code at this point.
And Monroe's not at that level yet, right? But probably will get there soon.
Probably, and also we've been working on middle housing for a few years now. And we just feel that having some more housing options in the city is good for everyone. Good for attainable housing. So, yeah.
You don't have to wait to get to that level. You can obviously go into that.
Yeah, but thank you for bringing that up. So yes, we are not required at this point by the state to have a middle housing code.
Yeah, and you know, kind of building on what Anita was saying, one of the things that we heard loud and clear out in public last year is there is not enough variety of housing options in Monroe. And so by encouraging these different types of development, that would not only increase the variety, but also the cost.
I'm not intending it's a bad thing.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not required.
We are not required to.
At some point.
Twenty-five thousand is the population. Based on our current comp plan projections, we will not get there in the next twenty years.
Since it sounds like the state is very much wanting cities to do this, and we, it sounds like we want to do it. Are we going to do incentives to developers to develop this type of?
She's getting there.
So good about me that.
We've started that discussion.
Yeah, definitely, definitely will be incentive. But yeah, we can talk about that and how we want to incorporate that into the code. So this next slide just, just kind of shows the improvement to land value ratio. So just showing the opportunity of some development opportunity in the city. And that was the last slide. So do you have any questions before we get into the code? We'll be happy to answer.
So I want to just get my head around what, what, the middle housing is not a zoning. It's not, but it is a development. And it's basically, middle housing is compatible with all of our single family zoning, correct?
Yes, that's the goal.
But not multifamily. And what about mixed use?
Completely separate. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so the example that I gave, that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about, you know, the larger apartment complexes or multifamily or mixed use at this point. Yeah, only, only those attached developments.
Gotcha.
So, yeah.
So numbers, Bob was, are you after numbers? Because if you look at Shane Osaki, former community development director in Monroe, he has talked about middle housing for households above eighty percent of the area's median income. And then we looked at median income in another document tonight, eighty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-three a year is the median income.
So it's, it's more affordable, but not what we would consider.
It's middle.
It's middle, yeah. Middle income.
For the folks that they talked about in here, that you're, you're. Firefighters, police, you know, folks. So those are making about seventy-one thousand essentially.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good point, too. I think that's why we initially called it middle income housing in our half, just to distinguish that. Yeah, we're trying to reach out to, like Jay said, the teachers, firefighters, police officers, people that work at City Hall.
City one, work and live.
Live and work, absolutely.
Or have the, have the option anyways, right, to be able to do that. So, yes. Um, so yeah, I am, like I said, I'm not sure how many of you were able to get to the whole code. I know it was sent out a little bit later. So basically, just to go through what it looks like, we're looking at creating a new chapter, just calling it middle housing. You know, we'll have the standard sections about purpose, you know, definitions related to middle housing, you know, what it applies to. And so in this sense, we're looking at applying it to all. And then also just, I'm saying single family zoning right now, but it's the plan to do away with that term and just call it, I believe, or detached residential, okay. So we're going to leave out the single family. So this will be happening in all residential zones. So then, next sections, we go through each different type. So just for example, the first section, twenty-two point nine two point zero five zero, they can have duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes examples, going all the way through the different housing choices or options. And then I think another important detail is that Commissioner Katrina, like you mentioned, design standards. I think those are very important, those are very important. So, so we don't have those three-story. Yeah, look, next to a small, single family home, right? We want, we want it to fit into the neighborhood. So, so that's something that we'll be working on. So this, this is just a draft, a first draft. We did, like I said, the consultant wrote it, Kate went through it, we had Chris, the program manager at the MAHA, go through it. So it is a work in progress. So just wondering if you had any initial comments or feedback at this point? I really, I really do like pictures. I'm hoping to get, we do have some pictures in here, but hopefully, hoping maybe to get a couple better graphics just to give some examples to developers. And then, like you said, we do want to talk about some incentives. I think we're limited on what we can offer, but I mean, maybe we can do like an expedited review process. Maybe at some point we can have like ADU plans available for residents to come in and choose or pre-approved ADU plans, things like that. So those are just a lot of different options that we can, we can look at.
Yeah, and just to add on, there's, there, to me, there's a really unique opportunity with this code in particular. Right now, we have, so a couple of things happened. In twenty nineteen, the city eliminated its PRD code on residential development, which took out the ability to flex your code even more. So that's something that could come back in a different iteration. But this code, if we do it right, could potentially get rid of the infill standards, which were adopted separately, and we would be creating even more compliant with some of the changes that happen at the state level, very prescriptive. You pick this, you pick that. My hope is that we can also address some of the concerns about, especially in the downtown core with the appearance. I was, can't remember how this conversation went, Anita, I know I had somebody at the office, but when I worked in Marysville, there's a street that actually requires pitched different types of roofing because that's really important to maintaining the character. So as you're working with the middle housing, there's opportunities to be prescriptive on what this needs to entail. And so this draft code is really starting to get at that. And again, there's, I think, an opportunity for us to merge a document that is not, that we use today, but is not codified, and put it in the code to meet some of the other requirements. Because the state said you cannot have design review boards anymore. You can have design, but you cannot treat middle housing differently than single family. And so there is really the potential that this code helps us out in many ways and hopefully achieve a variety of different housing product.
So one of the questions I had for the commission was, do you, do you like how it's sectioned off as far as looking at the different types of development, going through that separately? Or any other type of format you're hoping to see, or is that a good start?
I think it's a good start.
Okay, Mike, I like the.
I don't know if there is any other way to present something.
There's other options. I love this.
Yeah, there's other options, yeah.
Yeah, this was good. The other only suggestion would be maybe like that graph that shows allowed, like with pictures sort of, like what would be allowed and like in one space. Because, and I mean, right now you have to pick, okay, I think I'd be interested in townhomes. And then you'd look at what those setbacks are and all this stuff, but somehow getting them all in a line, like, you know. Yeah.
Comparative table.
I had a couple of questions. I didn't say that now. So parking, I know that we are trying to get away from people driving cars. And so we try to incentivize and not have parking with, with units and stuff. But, and I saw on here that generally it's one parking spot per unit. But then it could be, that could be taken away if you have street parking, that they wouldn't be required to have a parking spot on site. Speaking to some community members that are having ADUs show up in their residence, in their neighborhoods, parking is an issue. And we're not to that spot in Monroe yet where people don't drive cars. And in fact, some people, households drive two to four cars instead of one. So I would like us to be more real careful about that and not have exceptions for allowing the developer to say, oh, everyone's going to park on the street. So watch out for that just because Monroe's unique and not quite an urban city yet. One other question is, in here, I thought it said that for, in Osaki's presentation, that some of these could be detached, but then you, you keep referencing like non-detached or attached. So like a cottage, the cottage port, those were detached. So can you clarify, can that, is that allowed?
Like detached.
So there was an example, I think in Osaki's, that said you have, instead of having one five thousand square foot single family home, you would have three detached twelve hundred square foot. Okay, so then is that, that was in Osaki's, but not in what you're presenting to us?
Yeah, yeah. And I can, we can revise that code as well. But usually cottage development is detached. I don't know if I've, I don't know if I've seen any attached ones, but.
Well, I think there's, there's a bigger question, though. If, sorry to interrupt you, but so some of the early diagrams here, we're looking at, you could have, so it was the detached fourplex.
Yes.
Oh, we are not looking at permitting that. We are looking at attached housing with the exception of the cottage housing code, which is very specific. That's the whole, the, there's a way to do it. And it starts on page eighty-nine.
So you could do for detached if you followed the cottage, like you have to apply for it? It wouldn't be outright allowed?
Correct.
Okay, and so only in specific areas would we would want to allow that?
Yeah, because what we're, what we're trying to achieve is more housing. And the attached housing, you can actually get more units unless you start saying, all right, the detached, they're super small, so eight hundred square foot instead of three or instead of four attached, which you can do with a two-story. Just based on the analysis that we've seen, you can achieve a higher density, more units with the attached housing than the alternative of four detached units. If that's something that the city wants to consider, that's absolutely something that we could look at. But at this point in time, we were looking at either attached. The only alternative is the cottage housing, which is a separate permanent application.
Okay, because we're talking about varied housing, right? And from, from some of the feedback that we were getting, I specifically remember a table of people at one of our meetup groups where it was older adults that were saying they wanted small detached cottage-style homes. And that was a lot of the conversation about that. And so I would like us to revisit that a little bit. And let's see, and also some of that seems like it would fit into a neighborhood a little bit more discreetly, like the Strawberry Lane place that we keep talking about on one seventy-nine that has really big lots. It seems to me like it would go over easier with that neighborhood to have four detached small homes than fourplex that show up in those neighborhoods. Because we do have to try to make sure that they're going to fit into neighborhoods. Another thing is, how do we go about being more aggressive where instead of we authorize thirty percent of the, of the single families up to, how about like new developments require thirty percent have to have middle housing? How do we get to that? Because that's really where Monroe, that's where we get our housing, is our new developments. And all we're getting is big mega houses. And so for people who already live here that want to upgrade or move or live, move to Monroe that work here, a new development would have to include some of these ideas from middle housing because it's more likely that that's where we're going to get the growth than somebody in a downtown lot redeveloping their lots.
But that's, that's where you're thinking of the PRDs coming back in about.
Well, it's a potential. Well, it, it's a potential, but I mean, the other thing that's been um. At a higher level, um, actually, just a presentation last week was really talking about that inclusionary zoning, which is something that we haven't really. Started discussing, which is a requirement that you have to have X number at a particular price point, or you need X number of. Duplexes, um. Because you're right, what we're seeing, um, if we leave it as is, we're gonna continue to get the same thing that we're getting, which is the detached. Residential with a yard, um, so it's something we're. We're gonna have to come up with some good ideas.
Cause that would be my comment, if we can focus on finding a way that. Whether you present to us, here's your options, but that, that needs to be one of our options, is to, the code to require it.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna comment something similar, because it's, it's great to have, it kind of ties back to the comprehensive plan pushers from the last meeting. Which was two, or like a month ago, um, but the. On, it's great to have a plan, and it's great to sit there and say, hey, we're going to allow this under the zoning. But if you're not requiring a certain thing, then allowing for the flexibility is great, but part of that flexibility is still allowing. The gigantic developments of these mega homes to come in, and then the land, then the land is gone, and so now, instead of having. Thirty percent of the available lots, having then you've taken one completely off. The market, and there was no improvement in this area, so. I agree, we've got it, we have to look at that collectively as a city and move, and part of the comp plan and part of this. Just looking at how we can say, this, this is what we want, and maybe we have to wait a little longer for the right developer to come. And do it, but this is what Monroe needs, so this is. We do have to kind of narrow it a little bit, which I know we have a lot of people who want maximum flexibility in any of the zoning. But it doesn't necessarily get us to where we want unless we're saying, hey, this is the target in these areas, so what can we do to say? Require thirty percent of whatever new develop, or whatever that looks like. To make, ensure that we are checking the boxes that have been on these comprehensive plans for years and years and years, but. When you look at, how did that actually pan out, it's, it's not, so we have to do something a little different and streamline it a little bit. A little bit more.
Presentation from last week, there are examples.
Kind of teetering back in, um. Now I know, I haven't seen it so much in Washington, but some areas do, do duplexes that are detached. Cause we have such an aging population. In our society, we have a lot of families that wanna have their family home, that wanna be able to put an elderly parent or parents. So I mean, I don't know if that's part of middle housing, that's just a completely different issue. Cause I know you're telling me everything is attached, except for the cottages, um, well, I'm not really sure if that fits into that. Um, and my second thing is, you know, kind of what they're both saying, um. And if not just specific to Monroe, but, and all these new developments and everywhere around, they're just building these big huge houses. And you can't even find newer homes that are smaller, and. You know, so you're in, you're really in a quadrant, you're looking for new homes nowadays, and almost every one of them are two stories. Not everybody wants a two-story, so I don't know if that's something that can go into developments, or we're kind of changing some of the type of housing that. Are required in a development, because to me. Not everybody wants to buy these, maybe a passive. And, but you're, you're really left unless you wanna buy an older home, there you gotta put the money into the six up. So you kind of really, I mean, you know, we moved to Monroe a year and a half ago, and I searched for houses for two years, a- all over the place. And it's really a difficult situation, there's like really no middle ground going on anymore. It's a hard thing, and I know a lot, just talking to a lot of people over this course of time here, there's. There's so many people in demand for one-story or smaller homes that, you know, we're not twenty-five, three thousand worth of homes.
I, I have a question, so one fifty-four on the way to Fryland Elementary, we have duplexes that are ninety degrees. So how did, so from one fifty-four, it looks like a regular, um, you know, residential. From the other street, it looks like a, so you can't really tell they're duplexes, how did, how did they get that? Implemented, how, what design standards were put in place that corner lots would be a ninety-degree duplex? And why can't we continue that?
Yeah, I'll have to go back, that, um, that was before my first tenure with this, it, it's a standout that Lance and I. Uh, we point to all the time, that is a, a beautiful example of how you've got duplexes, and you don't even know you've got duplexes, and just with a big house. Um, so I, I need to go back and figure out, but I think that was in one of the planned developments in the Frylands. I just have to, I have to do the, the research on the history.
So, and then roll us back in time and of why the PRDs were. Got out of favor, was it abuses by developers, and they kind of circumvented rules that were in place that. That we didn't tighten down enough, or what was that?
Yeah, so, um, Anita can follow up, but my understanding is that the city was not seeing the type of development it wanted, and it really um. Was around the type of play area or open space, um, and. I wish I had been here during that tenure, cause I would have looked at changing the codes instead of just eliminating them. Some of the other decisions that were made is that some of those creative standards were built into the required subdivision code. And so the thought was that the things they liked were built into the subdivision code, but it. A subdivision code does not allow you to change your lot size, it doesn't allow you the flexibility on setbacks. That's very specific, the middle housing code is one option for us to be a little bit more flexible. Very specific with these types of developments, um, so.
I think, I think that's what the commissioners are asking, they're saying PRDs, um, making sure we have middle housing. And the city takes care of the parks, rather than developer take care of. Mismanaging or something, tiny neighborhood park, if the city was to take care of the park space, then you don't have to worry about that. Bob?
I agree wholeheartedly, because the PRD would allow us the flexibility to, to mix use. As well as put in city-maintained parks, developer-maintained parks never work. We used to call them pocket parks, they, they were just, you know, basically useless as a park. And they just fulfill that, that requirement from the building. I also agree with Melanie, I was going through and I said, oh. May up, maybe up to thirty percent, and I go, that's never gonna happen, because they're gonna do it. So it's either we have to incent or require it, yeah. Combination of two, I, I wouldn't be opposed to requiring it thirty percent.
Yeah, I, I do wanna say though, some of the challenges with. If you, so if you're trying to achieve a nice park in an area. It cannot necessarily always be on the city, because that requires all of you to pay more taxes, to all maintain.
It can be, uh, developer-funded, city-managed.
But there's a cost to that, city-managed.
City-managed.
People, there's also a cost though, because I can say my HOA fees have tripled in the five years that we've been here. Because the cost to keep the grass green, sprinkler cost, the maintenance with the roots that, from the trees that were little bitty. Twenty years ago when it was developed, but are raising the pathways and stuff in the Frylands, and. Then to, you know, to bring in bark and to do that, and you've got neighborhood people who are doing it, but the cost, that's a lot, and so. I mean, you're talking, you talk about taxes, but the, you know, the people that have the HOAs with those parks are. They're paying extra too, and our people are not the only ones that are using those parks, so it's not like we have somebody out there saying, oh, are you part of our HOA? You can't, you know, you're not, so you can't be here, so, and, and I like how the Frylands is set up, where you can. Take a walk with your kids, and then they're like, ooh, a park, let's stop, and we can play for ten minutes and then keep going. It's a really nice setup, but in terms of. But that's a different discussion.
I gotta get to Kelsey, Kelsey?
On that note, um, maybe we could require the parks and things to be more natural, or like more where they, um. Like take care of themselves if we have like PNW native species in there, um, the forest really does take care of itself. Whereas grass doesn't, and so maybe we could have some policy change in there. That it's just more water-efficient and um, less maintenance.
I was wanting to mention that, um, since we, we no longer have PRDs, um, our subdivisions don't require parks anymore, so.
So, so you're pointing that out, meaning like we could, we're seeing. We're having a decline in more open space in parks, because we don't have it in there. Um, yeah, because the other thing that happens when you have the local or the HOA parks only is that we had. We had an example of it brought to our attention where it's the, you know, exclusionary, so maybe you, in your place, they're not asking people, do you live here? You don't belong here, but that does happen, and then you've got an open space that appears to be a neighborhood, or somewhere anyone can go and then be, build community. But instead, it, it turns the opposite, and it makes somebody feel excluded from an area, and so, um, we heard that from. You know, we don't, we have a lot of park space, but our acreage, that's all riverfront and stuff, um, we, we heard from people, they want more. Pocket parks that are shared, that everybody belongs, uh, is allowed to belong in and can use and build community, so. Um, whatever it takes to get us there, I, I think our taxpayers would be interested in uh, supporting the ongoing maintenance for those type of shared spots.
So city-maintain pocket parks.
Yeah, I mean, we heard, we heard that a lot.
I haven't thought that had even been in the plan, um, that there has to be a park within a mile of everyone, or. I remember us talking about that.
Yeah, but that, that, that's the city-funded park plan, which is very different than an HOA developed and maintained. The, the park plan does specify that within X distance, there has to be a, a city facility. And, and that's why I, I just wanna be a little bit cautious. Um, that, that plan is different than these parks that are in the Frylands or developed as a. Benefit of a developer getting more units or. Or whatever. Even though that isn't a private development, it benefits that specific community, and that's outside of the park plan where. It's all city-funded, so it's just caution, that's all I'm saying.
But I think what we're saying, they can be together, so then that could hit the, the goals of the parks plan, because if the, if the developer pays for it. And we um, had a plan in the, like a PRD, they pay for the initial, and then it becomes part of the cities, so. It's clicking that box of now there's a park within a mile of even more people.
So I would encourage you to talk to the Parks Department, because they don't see it that way, in the sense that if you have more parks, then you need more manpower. Our biggest cost is employee, employee costs and benefits, so if you continue to add. Just because you created a, a park somewhere, there is a significant cost to maintain it. And so I, I did have a conversation with um, the Parks Department, cause I'm like, why aren't we counting schools, or? The PRDs or these other areas, and it, it has to do with the funding specific to construct and maintain, so. Um, I totally agree with what you're saying, uh, it's just. Maintenance of these additional facilities is not in the budget, in fact, we do not have, my understanding is we don't have enough parks in the areas. Maintain the parks that are sitting here today, so it's, there's a cost to it. Lance, you wanna, you have anything to add to this one?
I, I don't, it's, it's, um, like you said, I mean, this is, this gets sort of into the intersection between. The parks plans and the, the zoning and development code. And there's, um, you know, they're harmonizing those two, we were in the process of doing that, of course, the, you know, the. Parts has just recently done the, the, um. Uh, part, uh, an update on their plan, and they're in the, in the process now of working on, on trails, the, the trails plan, the, uh. Some of the requirements, so I did wanna make one comment that, and I don't think anybody specifically said this, but. Was maybe getting close to, is limiting the, the allowed size of houses. And that's something that has kind of a mixed legal background too. There's been communities around the country, I think it really started in, in Colorado. Where they were limiting the, the square footage of houses, and that's, and in a lot of cases, that's been deemed. Um, illegal, but when you could, when you do it in conjunction with. Certain amount of incentives, or if you're looking at a specific housing type like cottage development, I think that's where some of the. Legislation related to cottage housing is, is, is headed, um. And in the current, in the most recent state legislation, they actually defined what cottage housing is, and in those cases, those, those codes can. Get at limiting sizes, but just to take a. Kind of a broad stroke to, you know, some of the new development that's, that's gone on in the north part of town and saying, well, you can only build. Houses that are fifteen hundred square feet, I'm just, you know, making that number up, is, is really not, is, is really not, uh. That's been challenged in court, has been determined, uh, not to be legal in many cases, so. That's why typically cities will look at incentives, if you're doing certain smaller types of development, then you can get. Uh, density bonuses, for example, to, um, as a part of a larger development, so that's something that we could potentially look at.
But I think if we could incent people, or at least have this as a, an allowed use, we could, we will, and we had a client, look, um. She bought two lots, um, kinda U-Dub area, and she's gonna make. Six, she's got six friends, they want a cottage development, so seven units. Um, on two city lots, so if we have that allowed, we could have. Um, folks that have a wherewithal to buy the two lots. And then go together with their friends, and they could have their own community there. Um, and, you know, definitely economical, it's the land that aren't being purchased, um, so as long as it was allowed use. And we were careful about it, that would, you know, take care of itself, if it was economically viable.
Yeah. Uh, okay, comment, I just wanna say, some, I think this is great, we've all been brainstorming a lot of stuff, and it's. Good when you guys give us uh, some background on what limits might be and why they might be there. But also, we're tasked with trying to make things different, so we're getting better, different outcomes. And if, if we keep just hearing about why we can't do this and this and this, then we're gonna get all the same outcomes, I just feel like that's. I get it for like cautionary stuff, but at the same time, maybe if the conversation could go like. Um, so what we are trying to do, the path could go, could be this way, instead of, uh, we can't do that because this and this and this, I. I'm feeling a little bit discouraged by, um, a little feeling dampening of some of these ideas that are coming out, and. Feel like everyone's ideas are about things that we've been hearing and talking about from community members over the last couple of years, and this is the final stretch. This is where, um, all the work we've been putting forward is actually gonna come out, and so, um. I don't know, finding a way to get a different result, uh, is what I think we're all trying to do, so.
Well said. So I think on my list I have, so Kate mentioned inclusionary zoning, so that's something that would require, um. You know, to do affordable housing and things like that, so, um, next time I will bring back some pros and cons of that, just to show you what that looks like, um. I'll look at some examples, cause you mentioned, um, maybe doing the small detached developments, um, smaller houses, so I'll get some examples, maybe from Tacoma. I think, and some other cities, I'll bring that back, also, um, this is a, an idea I have, but I don't think. I'll just throw it out there, um, how about not allowing single-family at all? Detached, detached single-family at all, I mean, I, I feel like that would solve a lot of the, the problems. But, um, so yeah, but, but no, I, I appreciate that, um, Brandy, so I, um, definitely will think of some creative things. To bring back next time, to, um, to bring to the conversation, um, but it sounds like, um, as far as like. The beginning of the code, it looks fine, we just need some, we just need to change some things up and bring some, um, fresh ideas into that, so.
Before you go, I need to figure out, what are we calling single family now?
Um, it's detached residential.
A little ahead of time, but we've got to this one right. So I'm going to make a motion that we extend the meeting. Past nine o'clock, given what's left on the agenda.
Go to second, please.
All second.
Bob, second. Pushers in favor, please say aye.
Uh, is there anything else you would like me to research when I come back with this code? So far, okay.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Good to see you. Good conversation.
We got uh, the home stretch here to go. We are now. Seven point one. And are you ready?
Maybe, I don't know what this screen is doing.
To Kelsey and Lance, I'm so sorry that the call dropped earlier. This is why you don't hire a planning assistant to run IT. I did my best.
It wasn't for very long. You did great.
I caught it pretty quick this time. So we have the monthly department report for February. I'll try and be pretty quick tonight because it is getting kinda late. Um, we had five pre-application meetings for February. I'll just note a couple of the um more notable ones. You'll see one oh two East Main Street. That's a property that we've had a lot of preapplications for. That's there at the corner of Lewis and Main and the Doll of Key Building. It's a space that's been empty for a while. Um, I am happy to report that Sushi Spot has applied for a business license. They're applying for building permits and um they have signed a lease for that space. So we will be getting hopefully a sushi restaurant, it's looking like, in the space in the Doll of Key Building. That's been empty for a couple of years. Hey, um, also, we had a second preapplication for PUD at First Air Field. Um, we are expecting to get a development agreement application from them sometime this week for that space. Um, for the project highlight for this month, we went with the Starbucks remodel since everyone was dancing in the street. When it reopened. Um, this is the Starbucks that's there in the parking lot by Fred Meyer. Um, and with cheering the building with Wingstop. Uh, just goes over some of the applications that they went through to bump into the adjoining space. And uh updating their drive through. Uh, they. Applied initially for their TI in May of twenty twenty three and they received their final building inspection approval to reopen in February. Moving on to current projects, um you'll notice under final plat review. Uh, Garibaldi is no longer listed there because they have received final plat approval. And they have started applying for building permits and drones. I think um we've received. We've processed sixty um single family resident applications for them so far. Um, scrolling down a bit, you'll notice a couple of new applications listed. Uh, a binding site plan application for the Wendy's Drive Through. That is on the um Fred Meyer's property, uh binding site plan. Application was part of the requirement for the site plan review application that you've seen listed for a while on the current projects. Um, so those will be reviewed concurrently. Uh, you'll also see a boundary line adjustment um for a property on Main Street. It's a pretty minor boundary line adjustment to correct a common property line between neighbors that runs through the middle of their garage. Any questions on current projects?
I have one question.
Yeah.
Back on the preapplication meeting, the um number four is talking about a triplex on one fifty fourth. Um, tear down existing single family and three bedroom. Triplex, that that's kind of about what we are trying to get to, right? I mean, isn't that what the middle housing, that would be like a success story and. On one fifty fourth, that is. That is where I thought maybe it was prohibited because um. Looks like the HOAs and stuff, but this is one where it's allowed.
Uh, it's a manufactured, it's a manufactured home right now, but it is not within, it's on the east side of one seventy ninth. Kind of towards headed towards Blueberry.
Okay.
In that area.
No, it's.
Okay, well.
That's good. I mean, it's getting to middle housing, I guess, so.
Brandy, thank you.
I'm excited for sushi. I was gonna ask you questions and you came prepared with them and it made me really happy.
And when it comes to sushi, I always come prepared. This is, that was like my number one wish list item.
Windows, yeah.
Has a big relief sign.
You're right next to the, and the birdberry place is right.
Yeah, the birdberry is right next to it.
Um, so this is probably gonna change next month, but there were si- zero single family building permits issued in February of twenty twenty four. And the building department conducted two hundred and two inspections. Um, as far as building department updates, uh we've been working with our. Um, communication consultant um Mojo to develop tip sheets, handouts and other update. Information regarding the code updates. Um, we were able to get all of our applications, our building permit applications updated in time for the code updates. And everything's um live online as of Thursday of last week.
Yeah, and and just a reminder, this code changes, we moved to the twenty twenty one. International codes for building. Um, and that's why Hannah was kind of alluding to, we got sixty of those. Um, applications for Garibaldi. They came in before the code changed, so they're vested under the previous code.
Yep, so there were my, the remaining um like thirty or so lots up there at Garibaldi will have to apply under the twenty twenty one code. Which has different requirements for what they'll have to apply for.
Um, also, you'll see that the state legislators did adopt Senate Bill sixty one twenty. Which delayed the implementation date of the WUWE code, which is the. Wildlife Urban Interface Code. Moving on down. Um, code enforcement, they've had more open cases and less resolved cases in February than in January. And uh KP over code enforcement, he's been working on educating new businesses regarding signage. It's been really pushing for that. Um, here are our new business licenses for the month. If anyone has questions on those, let me know. Don't see any flags. And moving down to the comprehensive plan, um you'll see that Kate has updated it to include. Um, the guiding principles that are found in chapter two of the comprehensive plan. Um, that you all have seen before, safe and accessible, connected and active, and so on and so forth.
A quick note on that, I'm going to council tomorrow night with these, so that will be their first introduction. And we'll also have an overview of all of the equity work that the commission did last year.
Are these the um, some, it seems like they've been um. Amended amended a little bit more? Are they, they have been spinest a bit, it seems like?
They have, they're still working in progress, but this is based on the feedback from the uh the CAC beating.
I think they're looking really good. I mean. It's totally imaginative, Monroe.
I'm glad to hear it. Um, also, under the comprehensive plan amendments, um. There's been an update to the shoreline master plan. Uh. Latest news there is the shoreline master plan ordinance was sent to the Department of Ecology for final approval. Approval with a copy of the adopting ordinance. So thank you Anita for that update. Good work. There's also been an update to the Monroe thirty annexation. Um, you'll see that the city council held its required meeting with the applicants on February twenty seventh. Um, the city councils is expected to take action to accept the ten percent petition. And operate authorize the applicants to begin collecting signatures for the sixty percent petition at the regular business meeting on March twenty sixth. So that is. Amy Bright will be taking that to council tomorrow. Anyone have questions on our speedrun through the monthly report?
The sushi spot have a timeline.
Let's talk about that during our discussion. Yeah?
Yeah, we're ready.
Let me start with this, folks on Zoom. Kelsey?
Thank you staff for everything, uh for your presentation and um I wanna know when sushi is opening as well.
We need Development Director Bailey.
I don't have anything to add.
Bob?
I'm fine. Good meeting, folks. Lots of good discussion.
Good to see you. Carla?
Um, I'm taking the information. I thought it was good information and good discussion tonight and. Thank you.
I have a question. Um, so where are we at with the branding and like new logo stuff? Are we gonna hear about that again? An update?
Yes, um. Let's see here. Becky has asked to be on your agenda. I wanna say it's the second meeting in April. For an update.
And then uh we also have um like two other things going on. I think like there's a trails and walkability consultant, right? There's a meeting for that on fourth, like a public meeting at the middle school at six PM, I believe at six. And then is there also that traffic safety, is that one wrapped up from the consultant or that's still ongoing?
I know they did another presentation at one of the recent council meetings. I don't believe that work is complete. Lance, do you happen to know that, oh, he's got a hand up?
Uh, that work is is continuing. I was there, the um, in reference to the branding. There, there is an item on council's agenda tomorrow that uh has an update on the branding.
Yeah, I just was, uh, yeah, so if we could end up getting um. I I already said branding's coming back up, but if there is still the safety pedestrians consulting, if there's any update from that, that would be nice. Okay. Thanks.
I just wanted to thank staff. We always end up giving you folks a lot of activity work after these. And we had a full meeting, so there's lots, there was that whole work, so sorry about that. Appreciate it. Melanie?
Thank you staff for all the information and it's it's cool getting to have our our new commissioners uh. Getting into the thick of things and stuff. We're gung ho towards end of the year approval of comprehensive plan. And um, does Sushi Spot have a timeline?
Somebody else wants to know about that too, I think.
Uh, they have not put in for their building permits yet. Um, they're not doing anything really major for their tenant improvements, so I don't see it taking a. A very long time. I will not confirm or deny a timeline though.
Okay, cuz I'm I'm ready to go blab and tell all the people I know that sushi's coming to Midmore.
I hope so. What's up with Wendy's?
Um, that's my project. Uh, it'll be a little a little while. Um, they have to go through the land use process for it before they can build the permits, but. Um, I would say this year it would be tight, maybe twenty twenty five. It was. And it was mostly on their end. They they were, they didn't get.
I don't think. Lance, are you still?
Lance, do you have a question?
I, no, I'm still here. I need to put my hand down.
We just didn't wanna not pay attention to you. Thank you.
My arm was getting tired.
Anita?
Uh, well, it's nice to see everyone. Um, I appreciate the great conversation. And there are a couple other restaurants coming besides Wendy's. Um, there's another Indian restaurant um by Grocery Outlet. Um, and then I thought there was a third, maybe the sushi was the one I was thinking of. Um, there was one other, but yeah, it seems like there's lots of um. New food restaurants coming, which is great. Um, and then also we'll be at the Monroe Community Egg Hunt on Saturday, so we'll have a booth. If anyone wants to say hi. That's all I have.
There is Bova's Zone.
I've gotten it.
Save your energy for tomorrow night. Anna?
I'm just really happy it's spring. I've got my peas planted and my potatoes are going in the ground this weekend, so I'm just. Yeah, happy.
Snap peas, snow peas, regular peas.
Oregon snap peas.
I am impressed with how quickly the city cleaned up um a fallen tree on one fifty fourth because it was. There when I left one day and then it wasn't the city or was it?
No, I thought it was a private. They were chipping nine o'clock on a Saturday.
Cause it was like it fell and it was just not there anymore and it was, it all happened really fast.
All I know is they were flickety split out, working on the storm drains out in. They did really, they were out really proactively doing a lot of work in one of the drains.
We'll pass the kudos along.
Right?
My motion that we adjourn the meeting. Okay.
Carla, second. And all in favor, please say aye. Fantastic. Thanks, folks.